Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, June the first, two thousand twenty. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Dave Harrison.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Sandy Seward.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, May the eighteenth, two thousand twenty. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. Tonight, Board, we have two pages of wastewater claims in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated June the first, two thousand twenty, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. And I want to send kudos out to the clerk and the deputy clerk. That is a very, very low amount.
Yes, it is.
And I'm very happy about that. So, we have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting, and we have no new business to discuss this evening. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
No comments. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
The meeting is adjourned, and we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting as soon as we reset. Thank you. We'll convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, June the first, two thousand twenty. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Dave Harrison.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Sandy Seward.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, May the eighteenth, two thousand twenty. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. This evening, we have twenty-one pages of corporate claims in the amount of one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and seventy-three cents. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have one question.
Sure.
On page seven, three-fourths of the way down the page, it says fire clothing allowance. It says two-eighty-eight, eight-twenty-one. Does that include payroll, or?
I know.
Is that a misprint?
I'd have to ask the chief. Clothing, you know what that is, Jim?
It's a good question. Then, we provide the clothing allowance in June of each year. Look up here, the police clothing allowance is up there. I'm not sure, actually.
It just, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight?
No, it's.
Seems quite a bit for fire clothing.
I don't think that's correct.
Just wanted to point it out, you might check on that.
It's a good catch, Dave.
Yeah. I'd have to get back to you, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But yeah, I don't think that's correct.
Other than that, that's all I got, sir.
With the exception of that one claim, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated June the first, two thousand twenty, in the amount of one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
I will make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have one new item to discuss this evening, and at this time, I will ask our clerk to read a letter, a request from the police chief into the record.
Mayor Dennis Buckley, Board of Works. Mayor Buckley, Board of Works. I'm requesting to hire Benario Comia as a probationary officer. Mr. Comia has successfully completed lost steps in the hiring process. Mr. Comia will be attending the next ILIA class. He replaces a vacancy left by the retirement of Chief Mark Schwartz and is in the budget for two thousand twenty. His starting base salary will be fifty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. Pending approval, his start date will be June sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Respectfully, Michael Maurice, Chief Michael Maurice.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
Do we currently have a probation officer prior to this?
Yeah, she's out in the lobby.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Have a final question.
Any other questions or comments?
I have none.
Sandy?
None, thank you.
All right. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's request.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. That concludes new business this evening. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
The meeting is adjourned. We will convene our city council meeting this evening at seven P.M. Thank you.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Kevin Day, District Four.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council, District One.
Gary Hall, District Two.
Kara Ferguson, at large.
Buddy Temple, at large.
Robert Ferguson, District Three.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This evening, Council, we have a special presentation, a very brief one. I want to just touch base with you concerning the recent sewer rate increase for apartments. They went from a user fee to a flat fee, and I wanted, I included in your packet a breakdown of what this would cost for the apartments, and it looked something like this. With the rate increase that we did, if you lived in a single or double-family dwelling, you had a flat rate, your rate went up about twenty-five percent. All other customers in sewage works who are on a charge by how much water they use, their rate increase went up about sixty percent, including apartments. But, and the column on the left is the rate increase for apartments under how we would calculate it if they were still being paid as, or charged as, for whatever they use. But if we go to the flat rate, their sixty percent increase in a couple cases goes up even higher. Some cases, it goes down. And there's a comparison, and there should be in your packet a picture that looks like this. This came from Parkview. If you look at the chart here, sixty percent increase for Parkview, every month, they pay, their water bill, or their sewer bill runs around ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Under the flat rate, their charge goes down to five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And why I point this out is because this apartment complex is, we have more trouble with this apartment complex than we do any other customer in the system. We are over there all the time because of blockages, and it boils down to what they flush down their toilet. So, one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is, in this instance, their rate, their bill is cut in half, but their problem is not going to go away. They are a heavy water user, and this gives them a break in their cost. Some other apartment complexes are, are almost break-even, and when we passed these increases, I reached out to some of the users that are going to be paying a lot more money, and I sat down with them because I wanted them to hear it from me. That your rates are going to go up, and, and this is what we are going to enforce. I didn't want to raise their, the apartment rate because they're the most affected until I had a chance to sit down and talk with them, and they could come and address the council with any issue they have. And tonight, in, in your packet, the folks who own Beach Meadow, they put a, or I put their response via email in, in your packet. Our friends at Willow Glen are here tonight, and they would like to comment on this. We're not going to take a vote to, to either amend the ordinance or not, but I do want to hear from you to see if you are interested in doing. If not, then I will enforce the rules that the council passed. But I just want to give, before I do that, I want to give them the opportunity to be heard. So, Karen?
Do we know why the flat rate is so much less for Parkview?
They're a very, very heavy water user.
Okay.
They use a lot of water over there, and it's, their bill, right now, is calculated on how much water they use. That's their sewer bill. They have a hundred and sixty units, so it will drop down dramatically. Karen?
I got you.
Hi. So, yeah, he called, my regional director, and I brought us into the office and talked to us about this. And we've been, I have bills that go quite a way back, but for an example, in February, with the bill dates from twelve-one to twelve-thirty-one, our sewer bill was six thousand dollars. In April, the bill dates of two-one to two-twenty-nine was seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars in just a two-month period. So, we, and our understanding is, well, I've got the letter here from the mayor that says that the beginning, sometime in either April or May, the adjusted bill for sewage would be, would change. I guess we also, we want to understand how the April billing is, obviously, everything bills in arrear. So, would that mean that we should have gotten these new rates until we got to the May, April, May back bill? So, we would like to, if possible, remain on consumption. We did some calculating, and the increase would equate to approximately a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars over a year's time, which means we'd have to make cutbacks someplace else, being the largest community in Beach Grove. So, we were hoping that we could take, you could take under advisement and not consider us residential, not classify us as residential, so that we could keep these costs down. And also, with the short notice and with the COVID-nineteen, we were not able, we wanted to seek some counsel for some advisement, and we have not been able to do that. So, we were just hoping that we could maybe meet next month and talk about it again, if we can't, you know, come to some kind of answers, or have a special meeting or something, just to see what we can do with these rates. That's all I have.
So, because of the, the rate changes, you'll have to pass that on to your renters, is that correct somehow?
Yes. The water bills, the water sewer bills, we have increased the last two months twenty-five to forty dollars per person based off of the sewage. So, that's significant. It's quite a bit. And then it's, per, and the form he gave you, he sat down with us a while back, and it's just going to continue to go up each year. So, it could be fifty, sixty, seventy-dollar increases over the next, what, five years? Is that what you said? It's, it's huge, and that's per resident, or five hundred, excuse me, five hundred and ninety-two units. Right now, we're ninety-six percent occupied. So, that's a significant amount that we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment on logistics? Talking to a building clerk, Linda, a couple questions she'll have is billing logistics and how we can build out some of these apartments. I know occupancy rate will be another thing, but something that we'll have to probably, I don't know, if we reach out to apartment complexes, are we going to charge them if an apartment's empty? That's something that we'll have to decide. If they have ninety-six percent occupancy rate, do we take out those for that month and figure out what, how many they had back in February when we blow that out? I don't think that was brought up before. And then, some of these smaller guys, smaller places as well, so they're be hit hard as well, so it's something that they should probably plan on. I don't know if they were notified to come to this meeting or not, but logistically, I, it's going to be hard to build out. We can do it if that's what the council wants us to do, but right now, I think it'd be pretty difficult to do. Based on these numbers here, I think sixty percent is much higher than what they're paying, and it's closer to where they should be. Is it the right number? It's, it's hard to decide, not for me to decide, it's for you guys. But logistically, it'd be hard to do that, but if that's something you want us to do, we will do it. But again, I think we'd have decided the occupancy rate and see if it's something that they have to provide to us or prove that they're empty, or prove that they don't have a renter in that specific apartment. Because if there's no water flowing through there, then I don't know if we should charge them based on that, so, but other than that, that's all I have.
I have a question, Jim. So, hypothetically, let's say someone has a residential home that they, they rent out. Let's say you're, you know, an investor like that. What does the, the public works do in that situation for a, you know, a tenant being absent from a residential home versus trying to implement something where it's a vacancy? That's a part of doing business as far as the, the owner of the complex. I mean, that's.
Saying if, if it's.
Yeah, like if, if someone owns a home right across the street, and they have a tenant, that tenant moves out, the owner's responsible for those bills.
Yes.
Okay?
Well, they're responsible if it's empty or not.
Exactly. So, that's a continuing thing. So, it's, it's kind of sort of the same policy if, if we have a standard rate for everyone. So, if you own a home, or own an apartment, or live in an apartment, and have a lease contract, having a standard cost, that way it's fair. There's no favoritism. And apply the same theory to if, if you have a vacancy in an apartment versus a vacancy in your home own, that you own, that's, you rent out as an investment. You still, again, as a business, you're, you're taking that risk as an investment. So, it should be, again, consistency across the board.
Yeah.
So, we have favoritism based on occupancy, you're really getting in the weeds on that, so be careful with that, for what that's for.
That, that's just an issue that was brought up by the building clerk, so I mean, like I said, we'll, we'll do as we're told and how, how the council wants us to proceed. I just know it's going to be, it's going to be very difficult to, to manage that every month with, with, based on the.
Well, if you look at the, the numbers on this, and this, again, this is, this is supplied, nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars minus the sixty percent, fourteen thousand, sixty-three dollars. That's an equivalent of fifty-three hundred plus or minus dollars. If you take that and divide that into the number of occupants, units, as far as people living, so if you've got five people living in an apartment versus two, that roughly is about eight dollars and ninety-one cents per month, an increase per occupant. So, when we raised our, a few months ago, it was a drastic twenty percent rise. That doesn't even compare to twenty percent. So, it's a pretty modest increase based on the usage. And then, per the mayor's thing too, I know you didn't address that, that damage. If, if there's, you know, damage, those services and fees should be passed on to the, the person that's liable for the damage. If they're flushing, you know, cinder blocks down there, and they've got parking on there, therefore, that, that investor, the owner of that property should pay accordingly. That's fair.
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
Cool.
I mean, if they cause the damage, and yeah, I mean, whoever's causing the damage, it should be liable for those, I don't have a problem with that, but.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
How do you monitor that would be my only hesitation. But yeah, I mean, other than that, like I said, it, it, it's going to hit, it's going to hit them hard, but again, it makes it equal. I mean, with, with the smaller guys, again, I think it's something that we just need to approach them and say, hey, you know, like those places on Main Street, they have those studio apartments, their bill's going to be substantially higher because we're going off the numbers, and like I said, if that's something that we will proceed with, we'll proceed to bill them that way.
One question I have for you, Jim, is do you know why, like, for Century Apartments, they have thirteen units, but under the sixty percent, they were only going to pay forty-four dollars a month?
Usage and vacancy rate. Right now, I asked Linda that the other day, and she said apparently, there's only like two people living there right now.
Oh, wow.
So, the usages.
There's other ones that are paying almost less than what we pay as residents, and they have nine units, six units, three units.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And they're paying less than what a regular resident is paying for their sewer bill.
They're, they're very, very low on usage, and I think some of these places are empty. Like, I don't know if some of these places, if they have nine occupants and nine of their units, I don't know. My guess is they're probably not full to capacity. I know the Century ones, I think Century, yeah, Century there at Fifth and Albany, Linda said she believes there are only like two, two of those units are actually full right now, which means the usage is way down. Still high for two units, but at the same time, still down for that, so, yeah, I'm not sure why they're so low, but my guess is, based on usage.
For these smaller units or businesses that have fifteen or less, would there be a way to possibly break it down per unit and send a bill just to that unit for the sewer usage?
We have, ordinance is to have to bill it to the property owner.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you change that, but like currently, a, a home, if it's owned by a landlord, then at least they receive the bills, not the tenants. So, I'm assuming that would have to stay the same if we're going to continue that process.
Thank you.
I'll be, be reaching out to get some guidance. If the council shows no interest in amending the ordinance, then we will move on and bill accordingly. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention tonight, and we will be reaching out to you over, before the July meeting, to get some more input. So, Karen, thank you, and we will keep you posted, okay? All right. Council, there's another very quick special presentation. I advised Kevin, Councilor Day, that I would put this on the agenda, and I did not. So, Kevin, I apologize to you. He brought up a point about the Little League, and just wanted to briefly comment on it. So, Kevin?
Yeah, I just wanted to see about, I know the fireworks are canceled, and to move that money that we were going to use for the fireworks over into the Little League and softball funds, split them right in half and give softball and Little League equal amount. I think that'd be good for both divisions.
And if the council has interest in doing that, we can sure take it up. I think Jim's going to do some research to see if he can do that as clerk, but I would be open to it. I told Kevin that I would go with him on this. I understand his compassion for Little League, so, and Buddy's here with us as well. So, I just, that's something that, I don't know if you wanted to vote on it tonight, Kevin, or you wanted to discuss it more?
Well, I mean, I brought it up last month, so I'd like for it to come to a vote, but if, you know, that's up to everybody else, so.
I have a question about the boundaries for the Beach Grove Little League. Now, I understand that their boundaries have changed as far as the, who's allowed to participate in the Beach Grove Little League, so the boundaries do quite a bit go outside of, like, specific Beach Grove residents, is that correct?
We've got a board member here, Jack, can you comment on that?
They have expanded, overwhelming, the kids are still in Beach Grove, as they've not been able to develop.
I have the map showing the, showing the boundaries. So, they include Washington Street, Edgewood, Emerson, Keystone Avenue. So, there's a map, I pulled it off the website that shows. So, the, you know, the outside, it includes Christian Park, eighty-two, McFarlane Middle School, Paul Miller, Paul Miller, I mean, there's, there's, it's on their website, the map.
Did that just change?
Uh-huh.
The end of last.
I'm asking, Jack, did that just change the boundaries?
The boundaries have expanded as Christian Park laps on its financial burdens.
But that just happened this year?
This year or the previous year, sometime in the last year, just my first year on the board.
Okay. I know when I was on it, and Buddy was on it, we, we went over to just across the line, Beechcrest and Gulfmore, but that was pretty much it. But these Little Leagues are just, they're going under. I mean, they're, they're, we brought in Lowell when, a few years ago, to let them play here, and, because they didn't have any place to play. Now, they had their own Little League, but we still let the major league come in, and that was just three or four years ago, but.
And it's hard for them to come from Christian Park down here.
And, and I don't think you're going to get that many out of bounds, to be honest with you.
Kevin and I, we're going to.
I think the majority would be here, but.
Would you like, did you want to look at it, Dave? Are you interested?
No, I, I, I seen it on the Facebook thing.
And, and those monies would come out of the general, what you said last month, correct? Okay, and that was ninety-five hundred?
Yes.
And with, and I know the stuff that Jim's put out with things as tight as they are, is that, is that, is that money there, or are we?
Well, I think the first step, if you, if you folks want to do this, I think the first step would be, Jim would do some research with the state to see if that's allowable.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to reach out to state board of the council, see if we can make donations like that, because if they suggested that we can't, then I don't want to get that checked. I just want to make sure with them before, and I don't know if it needs to be a resolution, or it would just be a vote, I don't know.
What would be the difference between getting it to the Little League and getting it to the promoter squad? And that's still a donation?
Well, I think we're, I think we're purchasing the fireworks, right? I don't think we're donating the fireworks, but I think we're purchasing the fireworks for the display, not cutting a check.
Is there a set amount the Little League guys and gals need, or we just don't? I mean, is there, is there a need, a board member?
They're always running on a shoestring budget.
Yeah, but I mean.
Every year, it's tight.
Your budget, I mean, do you know a ballpark which, what's your deficit, or?
I don't know that we're necessarily running on a deficit, I know this year, with the COVID, whatnot, we basically had a big cancel, we're regrouping, trying to put something together for the kids. There's not going to be any concession intake, not going to be any of the, any of the other things that help provide for that.
Okay. Thank you.
That was my next question, if they're still operating this year, is that, or will it still be Beach Grove?
We're still putting on the leagues this year, but.
Would you like a motion, Kevin?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to hold on it tonight.
To.
Or do you need to?
Motion to make a donation to?
I'd like to, yes, make a motion to make donations to Little League.
Can I speak out about this? We're so tight on our budget, and we're going to give money away. What's the sense?
For the kids of Beach Grove.
I understand that, but we're tight on our budget. We're, we're going to get a tax loan because we don't have.
Actually, we're not going to get a tax loan.
I'm sorry?
We're not going to get a tax loan.
Well, that's what was put out.
Well, things have changed.
No, it's put out that we may need a tax.
My financial report will be, will take that such.
But we're still tight on our budget. Why can't it go back in the general fund where it belongs? I mean, I understand, you have a.
it belongs? I mean, I understand that you have something into this for your kid, and others have too.
Right.
We vote.
Or grandkids, or, you know, what, yeah?
I don't have anything now, and other people don't either.
Just my tax dollar.
It's our money that's going to go to something else when our budget's tight. The money needs to go back in the general fund, point blank.
There's a, Kevin has made a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
And then we'll do a roll call. Bobby?
What's the motion?
To make a donation to Little League and girls softball?
Yep.
If it's acceptable. If it's acceptable.
Ninety-five?
Yes.
Again, do we know if they need all that? I mean, we need to be, I mean, I'm asking you point blank, do you know the dollar amount, yes or no?
Dollar amount what?
That that's required for this program to continue on this year, based on-
I don't believe the program will go under without this money. They will continue to volunteer to find a way to turn a nickel and a dime and a dime and a quarter, try and keep this Little League solvent for the community.
Will it be for registration? Will it be for bats? Will it be for baseballs? Will it be for cleats, uniforms?
It'll probably just be in the general fund, just trying to get all these things. Now, with the COVID deal, we probably have additional costs for disinfecting, et cetera, et cetera. Again, it's neither organization's threatening to go under probably if they don't get this money. It was just discussed that there's some money available for fireworks, and this is a feature of our country, our children, and the tools we want to give them, and teamwork, and other things that these Little League and softball offer. Trying to give them a little breathing room to keep these things solvent for our community, not just our children, for our real estate and everything in a community that is a great place to raise a family, and part of that is Little League and softball infrastructures.
Thank you.
All right. Bobby?
Well, I, my daughter's played in the softball league here in Beach Grove for the Blue Greenfield, so I truly support them. But I also recognize that we are in kind of some uncharted waters right now. We don't know exactly how the COVID epidemic is going to affect the city before. We're still not completely out of this epidemic. We don't know if it's going to come back. What I would like to see is possibly just set that money aside, not spend it, put it in a separate line item, just let it sit there, and then if softball and baseball is start up, they do see that they have a need, that they need assistance with, have them come back, have a dollar figure on what they could have, instead of just writing a, giving them each a little over four thousand dollars. Because we don't know what that's going to be used for, something like that. I'd like to see exactly what is that money going to be used for, what do you need it for, what do you need assistance with. But I would like to see that put into a separate line item. So for the current proposals, all I would have to say, no.
Okay, Buddy?
I think as much as I have a love for Little League, I've been involved, I was president for six years. I can go through all the speeches. I was on the District Seven staff for ten years with a relation to this man, Shirley Ferguson. And I just think that for right now, I don't think it's a no. It's a no tonight for me, but I don't think it's a no, definitely. I think there's some good things brought up, and I think they ought to be researched. I'm not sure that the promoters club, not being able to, being able to take care of the fireworks this year, that they're not in desperate need of some finance. And they're a private organization that the whole community does see. So I don't think it's a no. I just think for me, it's a no tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Karen?
I also, I believe in, you know, the best of our future and our kids. I have three myself. But at this time, I can't vote on that, not knowing what else is going to happen, what else we might need that money for. I would much rather see that benefit the citizens a little more directly with roads or sewer or, you know, things like that. I would rather hang on to that.
Okay. Gary?
Uh, no.
Liz?
You know, I have a tendency to agree as well, that I think right now we could just watch that money a little closer. And I know that we have our, we have our community center, the Parks Program. You know, they've had to cut back, they've had to reduce staffing, and they've got some very valuable programs for the community as well, and they outreach for nutritional programs. And so right now as well, for all the same reasons, I'm going to have to say no on it.
Kevin?
I vote yes, but is there a possibility of amending? And amending it to where we do set it aside, instead of give it to them for now?
Yes, there is, but maybe not tonight.
All right.
Dave?
I vote yes.
Okay, it doesn't pass five to two.
I think you have a good idea, and as Bobby had mentioned, what I got, Bobby. Maybe one way to at least keep it earmarked in some fashion, maybe.
Can I ask a question-
Yeah, Gary.
-before we move forward? Is there a way that we, like, I don't have a child in the program, but I would like to adopt a kid and support them? Because that would be a blessing for me personally. Is that something you guys would allow? So if you give me a player and I say, what do you need cleats or something like that, or, I mean, kind of, is that okay? I mean, like a single parent, help them out? Just write a check and say, here you go? Is that an option?
Paying a registration?
Anything. You know, whatever that, because each child probably has different needs, and that way we can, we can help immediately, if that's an option.
I'd be awfully surprised I'd do with that, part of the weekend.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, does that, are you okay with that? Because you're a board, I mean, can you ask the board if that would be acceptable?
Yes, I guess.
And we can, okay, thank you.
And softball as well.
Softball, the girls, sure.
Kickoff, maybe this money would work down the road, but we could get a kickoff on something.
Yeah, we can help them out. Gift cards?
Counsel will move to, you've been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, May the fourth, two thousand twenty. Board is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for, thank you, Ward.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Committee reports, ABC did not meet, Compliance did not meet, Greenscape did not meet. Liz, can you do an abbreviated RDC report?
RDC did not meet. We're going to have our next meeting to get some heavy issues taken care of on June the eleventh, seven PM. That's Thursday. And then our, our balance is the same as it was, and it is on the Clerk Treasurer's financial report.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to Jim. I do want Jim to read his report, please.
Good evening. City Hall has been working on a modified schedule in an effort to minimize exposure to our employees and remains closed to the public. Permits are still being received and processed on a timely basis. Citizens are still able to pay their sewer bills online, by phone, by mail, or by dropping their payment off in the twenty-four hour drop box. During a webinar last month with the SBOA and AIM, we were told to expect a thirty-five to forty-five percent drop in our monthly MVH tax distributions for May, June, and July of this year, and possibly longer. I'm happy to say that MVH for the month of May was only down thirteen percent, which was much lower than anticipated. As Clerk Treasurer, it is my job to always investigate all options and plan for all outcomes. It would be a disservice to the city to not be prepared for what may come. We were told our spring dispersment of property taxes could be as little as thirty percent of what was budgeted for. To prepare for this possible temporary shortfall, I've been in contact with our financial advisor in the Indiana Bond Bank and began the process of applying for a tax anticipation warrant, just in case. During this process, it has come to my attention that the general fund operates in the negative each year during this time. Typically, this is okay, but being 2020, everything seems to be different, and I wanted to be prepared. I learned today at three fifteen PM that the city of Beach Grove will receive between eighty-eight to ninety-two percent of our spring levy. This is far more than what anyone had anticipated, and I'm thrilled to say that I no longer feel the need to continue or have a need to vote on the tax anticipation warrant this evening. I despise the idea of having to borrow money, and I have to say there's, I'm happy to say there is no need to proceed. Thank you for your patience and understanding as I figure everything out. I attached the email communication from Marion County Treasurer's office for your review. I continue to stress the need to limit spending on any items that are non-essential to all department heads. I thank them all for helping with this. Stephanie Bram, Stephanie Bramlett, Director for the Senior Center, was just awarded a five thousand dollar grant from the GLIC Community Relief Fund to go towards replacing the HVAC unit in the future. Congratulations to Stephanie for her hard work. The bank account balances are listed below as of today, June first, two thousand twenty. These totals are prior to the claims that were approved earlier this evening. City Corporation, one million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Utility, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents. RDC General, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. RDC Debt Service, two hundred and forty thousand. I will continue to have updated information as the year goes. If you have any questions at all, please let me know. James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer. The email's on there that I received today, so, I was very happy for that, so sorry for the late notice on that. But again, I don't think there's a need to proceed, so just happy for that.
Jim, thanks for the email attack and also-
Congratulations.
-not being able to have to-
Correct. Thank you, Jim. Public comments. Counselor?
Person who signed up last?
We'll move to unfinished business. General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty, is up for approval on second reading tonight. And I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record.
Mayor, can I make a motion to have title only?
Absolutely.
We write it in full on the first reading?
There's a motion to read by title only? Second. We'll have to vote, beginning on my left. Dave?
Title only.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you.
General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty, is an ordinance that amends Chapter thirty-four, Section thirty-four point one five B of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to charges for ambulance responses generated by the Beach Grove Fire Department.
This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty, on second reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Do second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, counsel. General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening.
Can I make a motion to read by title only?
We'll read by title only, vote beginning on my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only, please.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you, Jim.
General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty. General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty, is an ordinance that amends Chapter thirty-four, Section thirty-four point one five B of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to charges for ambulance responses generated by the Beach Grove Fire Department.
Thank you. This time, I need a motion to approve General Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty, on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Counsel, we have one more item of unfinished business. That is your two appointments to the RDC. If you would like to discuss that tonight, we will, or you can table to the next meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table it due to the fact that we have the curfew that's going to be taken effect here relatively soon. I'll get a call before that can happen.
I'll second that.
Motion to table to the next meeting, which would be July the sixth. In a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, Bobby. Counsel comments. Dave?
About new business. New business?
That's canceled.
Why is it canceled?
New business is canceled. I would like to say one thing to our police force. I don't know if they're here or not, but during all this, especially to Bobby, who I know probably in the best position, man, I sure pray for you guys. Appreciate it.
I don't have anything.
Liz?
Just everyone stay safe, do the right thing, and let's work together.
I just thought that you remember the chief's family in the passing, his wife. If there's anything we as a city, or, you know, as a community, can do for their family. Also, in the Citizens Gas, I'm sorry, in the Citizens Energy Group, there is a thing in there, they've kind of restructured their stuff, and I know Bobby looked into this too. Financial assistance is available. You can go to their website. It's under their EAP funds are still available. And I know that it came up several months ago, and it, but it's an individual application. So you have to get in there and answer some personal questions about your specifics, but the funds are there for assistance if people are in need, and it's based on your income and all this stuff. So it's in your bill. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Karen? Buddy?
The thing that keeps the family self, pretty well out, patrol, police, and fire, as well as IMDB and fire neighboring city, keep safe for sure. What a heck of a job you got coming before you. And then the great thing news on that senior grant, so.
Yeah.
Bobby?
Yep. I would just like to personally thank all the residents and community that's reached out to show their support and their prayers for all law enforcement firefighters during times that we're currently in, especially during the COVID crisis. We definitely appreciate this, and we're, make me proud to be Beach Grove residents, the city, the support that we're getting.
Motion adjourned.
Good motion.
I second it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, counsel.